Good morning. This is 9 o'clock on Monday. Daybreak 26, 28, 10 on Colorado County Commissioners Court Order. Today we have Mike Cummings, the Second Baptist Church of Indian Territory. Please stand by.
Good morning. Jordan Davis, we pray that God will bless our meeting today. Lord, I come to you today proclaiming you as our Creator. I acknowledge and receive your free gift of salvation through your only Son, Jesus Christ, and I seek your guidance with the aid of your Holy Spirit. Lord, you set all things in order, including this governing body. Together, we accept our sacred duty to help everyone here today to seek justice with clarity and resolve and equality, to love mercy and practice kindness to all people, to walk humbly under your sovereign protection and guidance. May we display our love for others and employ charity, discernment, maturity, and wisdom. May we serve our fellow citizens with humility and impartiality and support and encourage integrity from ourselves and others. Our community has entrusted us to seek what's best for everyone and promote the common good for all according to your will. Bless the efforts of these men and women in their meeting to complete the tasks set before them. Forgive us when we fail to impartially seek and follow your plans for ourselves and our fellow men. Make us more like you in all that we do. In the name of the blessed Savior, of us all, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I believe Jesus is the flag of the United States of America and a republic for which his hands, one nation under God, individual and liberty and justice for all. On honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Okay, before we get started, I just wanted to call out a kudos to Captain Coffee from the sheriff's office on the paper yesterday. Coming up with the lower for the bullying campaign and the sheriff's office. I want to thank you for doing what you do today.
Thank you. I saw you come up with a program that this varsity sports. They send out these flyers asking for participation. So just with the sheriff, he's elected to participate. We've been doing it for about five years. And so it's a, the T-shirt is Dare to Care and it's Stop Bullying. And so we're going to pass them out in the schools, the river road, and in Buschland as soon as we get the score from the committee to purchase the service. But I appreciate you.
Okay, sure. I would love to purchase one because I'm a bully all the time. Oh, you'll think that's great. Okay, number one on the amendment, approval of minutes to recognize minutes from February 12, 2018, Commissioners Court meeting, also February 16, Special Commissioners Court meeting. Things are so recent. I'm going to see the vouchers to consider and to apply the payment vouchers processed by the county attorney's office from January 7, 2018 through January 21, 2018. And they are check numbers. You can't say right now. Thanks, Emily. 179095 through 179293 and wire transfers 103831044 in the amount of $3,212,820.20 cents. And this would be there in the payroll?
Yes.
So they have any questions or?
I move that we have moved the vouchers out.
Second? Motion, and second, all payable each time. I'll just email them right now. Number three is insurance report.
I've got a lot of this coming out because in anticipation. On the insurance, if I move forward, this court, there's nothing highly applicable on this report other than some of the large claims that we talked about last court that we were going to be seeking. There's actually one more claim in excess of $100,000 that is on the voucher report. And we'll show them. I will likely be moving money from Texas Class to the A and B account just to allow for more validity. So as those claims come in, we'll be able to meet those needs quickly. The interest rate is essentially the same between A and B and the Texas Class. There's very little difference. So we'll not experience a loss budget in that.
Okay, so number three is recognize. Number four is tack to consider and participation in the Naturally Slam program through Texas Association of County.
Yes, I just received notification on this Naturally Slam program. But I believe they talked about it some during the regional meetings. I was not there. I was out on medical leave. And so I didn't hear about it at the meetings. But I just received a notification. And this is a wellness program that they're offering. It's a one-time-a-year signup for self-insured plans. So this is our one-time chance this year to get in on it. They will be offering it next year if we were to decide to postpone or not to get in. In your packets, you saw a handout explaining what the Naturally Slam program is and a part of the cost. What I put in the packets is the information that was provided to me initially. I did talk with our wellness coordinator on Thursday and found out that there was some additional cost that wasn't noted in the handout. You'll note on the handout that the Naturally Slam program consists of a 10-week video-based program for employees that choose to participate at a cost of $38.50 per week for each individual for that 10-week program. Then following the 10-week program, the additional cost comes in at a 14-week kind of a step-up reinforcement program. It's 14 weeks long and the cost is $25 by weekly for any individual who completes or for each week that they complete. Now, the county would only pay for weeks that are completed or that videos are downloaded and watched by individuals. It may anticipate approximately a 60% completion rate. As you saw on the handout, participants must apply and be accepted. And it's based on body mass index, metabolic syndrome, and risk factors. You can, the county could have capped the number of participants. But the total cost for completing for every individual that completes would be $560 per individual who completes both the 10-weeks and 14-week reinforcement program. And then there was an additional six-month skills maintenance portion of the program that's at no cost. In order to participate, it would need to name and establish wellness coordinator and sponsors to do this.
So have we participated in this before?
No. This is a new program.
I do have concerns, Kay, with this price point. I know that we tried quite a few wellness initiatives throughout the last couple of years. And I know at the court level, we've not gotten much feedback in any how effective that's been. Most of it has been very minimal or low cost. I think we sent someone to a conference at one, at one point. But I am concerned about the $560 per individual without a true wellness person and a program to support the results. Like, I get why it isn't asked. The idea is that someone's healthy, so they have more medical claims down the road.
Right.
Right? I just, I think we have a lot of missing gaps before this implements, is my opinion.
Is this called per person that comes out of their county?
No, the county. It's billed right to the county on our billing.
Oh, okay. So who does our wellness?
We don't have a wellness coordinator currently or sponsor. We've talked about potentially Lisbeth Grisham at Agriculture Extension, but nothing has ever materialized.
And I know we went through our seminar proposal not very long ago. That's right. Very, very good initiatives that were presented. But at that time, we were sort of looking to see who was actually going to lead this effort in the county. I think it's a very worthwhile venture to get off into. But I agree with the concerns of the court as far as having been established where I'm going.
And one of my concerns is that it came mid-year in the middle of a budget cycle. It may be a bit premature for us.
I agree with you there. I think if you want to do this, we ought to consider it against what your budget. And maybe it's hard to do it right here in the middle of the court. I would need to consider the whole available accounts of what I should leave before the 316.
Exactly.
But I agree. I think it is a worthwhile venture to get up to the people.
We've tried it with all of the employees that tried to add a wellness. I actually had Sharon Davis try once and then Jessica Pepper try.
Well, in Augustine.
And the sheriff's office in Augustine.
Yeah.
I think we might need to put out a feeling or maybe an email and see who might be interested in if there is enough participation that we might pursue at that time. You know, I'd like to find out if our employees are ready.
And Kay, maybe this is a topic that would warrant for your insurance committee that looks at these claims so that we have a broader stroke around wellness and what that looks like from a county lens as opposed to just one program.
And we will be having a wellness coordinator here. I'm trying to think whether it's the middle of March. I may count.
Will they be open to the county's committee?
It'll be the Insurance Advisory Committee. And then they will follow up with presenting to Commissioners Court. This is the mid-year update that made you aware of last court, I believe.
Do you think there's anything else I'd like to attend that?
The Insurance Advisory Committee, it would have to be posted, I believe, because.
If you got one certain.
Okay, thank you, Kay. Number five, 10 o'clock, to hear a report on 10 o'clock plus.
I think I need a vote.
Oh, well, we're just going to wait until budget.
Well, we can reconsider. I knew that we reconsidered this issue on the Naturally Slam program a bunch of times for the year 2018, 19.
There's a. Here's our board. One second.
Okay, you have a motion to second on pay. Absolutely, thank you. Number five, 10 o'clock, to hear a report on 10 o'clock plus and take any action.
Do you want to say something else?
I was going to say I do have a feeling that you'll be deciding.
Okay, okay. Okay, 10 o'clock plus.
We are still working on the final stage of 10 o'clock plus implementation with the sheriff's office. We've run into some issue with the master report and final approvals. We are currently working with April at 10 o'clock plus and she's in process of preparing a demo for us on Virgin 7. We want to ensure that Virgin 7 of 10 o'clock plus can manage the master reports as we have done. They are an integral part to our payroll calculations. And so before we just jump in and start loading sheriff's office, we want to make sure that everything is working. And we're waiting on that demo with April at 10 o'clock plus for the sheriff's office right now.
Is that a demo that would be open to any member of the court that would like to listen in?
Sure. I'll just have to set it up with Veronica. We're doing it in her office, just a one-on-one demo with April and.
Can I actually go there? That's easier. Yeah, we can work on logistics.
Okay. Soon as we get it set, I'll let you know.
All right, thanks, Kay. You got one more?
Yes.
Number six, compensatory time to hear a report on compensatory time and take any action necessary.
I sent out notices on the compensatory time report on the 21st and notified department heads and elected officials who had employees that were over at that time. We had four employees from four departments that were identified at or above 100 hours. I immediately heard back from three of the four. The fourth one was out of town. So I feel like that also is being managed appropriately, monitored and managed. The employees and the time for those employees are being scheduled or have already been scheduled and taken off. This time is as of January 31st. So there's a little bit of time lag there. We always do the comp time report at the end of the month.
So whatever they had over, they're going to get that done?
They're getting it off, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kay.
You're welcome.
I did hear from Emerald National Bank. Just wanted to start current rate starting this week with our general checking account is 1.64. We have $15 million. I'll just generalize these totals and then give you the total overall at the end. $15 million in our Emerald National Bank account. In the other accounts at A and B, we're earning 1.52. So we're still a good number. Texpool, we're earning 1.36 and have $404,000 there. Texpool Prime is at 1.61. We have a little over $16 million in that account. Texas Class is at 1.64 and a little over $10 million. So our total cash this morning in our general fund We have decreased our collateral at A and B since our tax season has subsided. And to bring it back down to $45 million, we had been at $60. And our total account there with all accounts in our A and B bank is $39 million. So we're.
How much did you think was in the general accounts at 1.52? I didn't either. I didn't get that. You said $15 million.
Oh, I didn't. It's just, we have about $39 million overall in the bank. But some of those accounts, only the general has a special fund at the 1.64. All the rest of them are at 1.52.
So do you think we're too top-heavy at A and B with $39 million and Texas Class at 1.64 roughly?
It does, 39 million isn't even just all Potter funds. That's all the Emerald National Bank accounts. So for general, we just have $15 million in the A and B checking account. And then we're spread out between Texpool, Texpool Prime, Texas, and Texas Class.
With the rest.
With the rest.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Number eight, Brad, or need to hear a report on Brad, you can all pay $14.
Yes, our agenda says we did have a meeting on February 14th. I'm a meeting in the mornings. Learned a few things, which I guess that was, it's important to learn every day. But anyway, we took the office and then we selected the board officers. And one of the interesting things is, and I didn't realize this, there's a board for Randall County and a board for Potter County. And each of them have their own chair by chair, secretary. So that whenever an item comes up for vote, there's two votes taken. There's one Randall and then there's one Potter. So that was an interesting process. One of the things that we covered was there was three entities that had been a little delinquent in their, in their paying their allotment for Brad. And so in the policies, it has each of those entities in would be, they have to pay their, what they owe, what they owe, plus a 10% penalty. And there was all three entities asked to have that penalty, the 10% penalty taken off. And we finally did agree to do that. So they did pay up. We took off the 10% penalty. We approved Brad to purchase two new servers. All their servers are old. We all know how that goes. And also approved them putting up bids for parking lot repair. One of the things that I learned that I think it's, might be of interest to you is that the, each school district is audited as to how their appraisals are rated compared to another school district. So in other words, everybody, we're all in a school district. So the state audits every school district's appraisals. And if they decide that it's too low or too high, then they, they let the appraisal districts know that and they have to adjust. Now, you can oppose that if you can prove that the state's figures are wrong. But I think in all this discussion at this time of year over the, over the local taxes and property taxes, the state controls that appraisal. And so the state has caused a lot of this problem that we're having. And the reason, there's two things that have caused our local taxes to be wrong. And one is the mandates, unfunded mandates. And the other is the underfunding of our school districts. And this is the way the state has tried to say that they are funding our schools is by increasing appraisal values. So it's, you know, it's a state problem. It's not a local county or local city problem. But we're, we're becoming the bad guys. So anyway, I thought that was kind of interesting to learn. We did select officers for the appraisal review board. The appraisal review boards are different than the appraisal district board. And Potter County's board is Eddie Norfleet. His chairman, Leon Swift, his vice chairman, Tom Roder, serves as secretary for our grade review, which I guess I just didn't realize they were different. So those are about the many things. Our next meeting is March 28th, which is a little conflict with our payroll meeting. Any questions?
Is there any? Is there any advocacy from the authorities as far as legislators to have a louder voice? Legislators say, hey, you know, we're trying to be late now.
I think it's up to the counties, school districts, city municipalities. Act is, is our advocate, but we have to be our own advocate. We have to talk to our people. I think our legislators know what's going on. They read some of the legal propaganda. It's kind of scary.
I talked to Alan this morning about that. He's going to play the mandates and the revenue caps. And he advised me that the revenue cap is going to come back up again. Just coming, I just like especially, and I'm not looking forward to that because I'm fought it tooth and nail and I just love it on the end because it's just wrong. So you might face that. Number nine, county clerk to recognize and completion that you require 20 hours of continuing education. 2017 is described to Section 51.605, the Texas government. It's not in today. Number 10 is Potter County Council, proceed for to review the Tier 1 partial retention racial profiling report taking care of that. Have any questions on that? That's just appropriate to review. Number 11, Potter County Government Date to provide that date on the 5th and on 11th of November, and that's scheduled for April 23rd, 2018.
So this is just a placeholder so that we can mark that date as we started the year that we're in March. So April 23rd is the date. We expect to exceed close to 100 kids. We're excited about this. They want to come. We're also including a few other schools. So we expect a full day. The other schools, Kay, you might have to help me.
The private schools. We've got Saint Jacent Christian, Holy Cross, and Ascension Academy that we're talking to. Saint Jacent Christian has already, um, Holy Cross is taking it back to the teachers to see if there is interest there. And Ascension Academy wants to bring their entire senior class of 19, so.
Yes. So I mean, it's a good problem, right? That we're growing, but.
We only have 19, we're seeing a buzz.
Yeah. Sounds different. She said 19. But it's, it's a great problem to have. There's quite a bit of buzz and interest in. I think the students really get a good kick out of it. We'll continue to partner with the media so we give them the full atmosphere of getting an interview, sitting with the court. And we are going to shake up the agenda just a little bit. Same format, but obviously the sheriff's office will be very busy with the move and the timing. So all of that was taken into consideration for that. So in the next couple courts, I'll just get the draft agenda out to everybody so you can review it. I just wanted that as a place to learn. And for those that are joining me for lunch, I think we do $10 for the elected officials and department heads. And we can probably start turning those into lean.
That would be great, especially now that we're going to have extra numbers. So any donations would be very appreciated.
Thank you. Number 12, Labor Planning Committee to hear a report. Labor Planning Committee.
This is just a quick update, but tonight at 5:30 to 6:30 at the Westlake Community Center, 1615 South Brothers and the gymnasium, there will be the final review of the next neighborhood plan. And that will be the body of location. And what will then happen logistically is we will have an agenda item for the Commissioners Court to review the actual plan, provide feedback as well as the city, it will go planning and zoning. And then it will go to the city council for adoption. So I think what makes this process very different is this amends the comprehensive plan, which means it has to be reviewed for budget every year. That's very different than a strategic plan that you build and, you know, you kind of put a shelf and say, what was that plan we did five years ago? Very different. It has to be reviewed for budget year by year. So we continue to meet once a month, or every other month, I'm sorry, with the city. And AJ Fowler is the planning director, but she is who I would expect to come and dress the court, so you'll actually learn in your hands. But wanted to extend that invitation to anyone that would like to join. Tonight at 5:30 to 6:30, very informal, kind of come and go. They'll have city staff there, have different tables set up to actually look at the plan. It's blown up, two big pages for objectives and action items.
So this is the final, final report.
This is the final public review of it. And then it will come to us for, I think, a kind of review and, and, and administrative perspective. We'll then move to San Jacinto and Eastridge. So those were the first four kind of initially sketched out. The North Heights. The North Heights, the body was San Jacinto and Eastridge.
Okay, thank you. Number thirteen county parking policy. To consider for approval or for policy for parking on county property.
I noted with some interpretation that my name was on this agenda, which means that the employees will be burning the L G C. You should have a copy of the proposed policy. It is in the format for incorporation into the policy and procedure manual, employee manual. If, if it is approved this morning, or even if there needs to be changes for its approval, I'll get those done. And resync the entirety and send it over for posting on the internet. So it's available to all employees.
That's what I'm just.
Yeah. Any questions?
There is one question I'm not that we, the fee, the twenty dollar fee for replacement.
Yeah, the current version I have is replaced with, uh, replaced fifteen.
Fifteen. And you know, we don't know, we thought that would go back to the city. Hey, did you, did you, the one employee that left and didn't turn it back in? Did you get fifteen dollars from him?
We did.
And then what did you do with it?
It went to the treasurer's office and then had worked with Shannon. And I'm not sure.
I think that the city gets that. I'm pretty sure the city did. They gave the cars, you know.
Is that, is that that voided yet?
Um, could probably be reused, reused again.
Right.
But there's no big problem with it.
Yeah, but it'd be taken with it. Yeah.
Yeah.
It can use.
It can.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, voiding.
Deactivate, that's the word.
Yes.
Okay. And you'll have to change the list. Any questions?
You know, one of the questions I had was whether or not we could rent some unused parking places.
We did. Our contract between Potter County and the local government corporation precludes assignment of those spaces. They are solely for Potter County use. We would have to go to the L G C board to get approval to assign those spaces, which would be involved in sublease like this. If I misstated that, I was tempted to get it.
You know, if we have fifty unused spaces, that's nuts. We ought to be able to do something with those. You know, we got a lot, we got a lot of people downtown that need parking.
Yeah.
I would like to see us.
Yeah, I think maybe the, maybe the prudent course of action right now would be to see if this policy, if implementation of this policy causes escalation in utilization of the parking garage and then look at where we're at at that moment. Obviously, if we, if all, if, if the employees who aren't parking there now decide, you know what? Maybe I'll park over there. We might.
And I, I think that's going to happen.
Yeah, we may be pushing close to our, our, our capacity at that.
I'd certainly like to see that happen.
I would love to see that happen.
Yeah.
What are we looking at as far as the city implementing the, uh, sporting, the parking.
I don't know that. Yeah, I don't know. I don't have visibility into the park. We were scheduled for an L G C this Wednesday and they got canceled by the chairman. So that's usually when I ask for a date, but I've not heard a timeout on that.
And commissioner, back to your question, if it is a matter of an agenda item and a sublease to the L G C, we have representation on the L G C. We could certainly do that if we get to a point where we feel like we have vacant, vacant parking spots. Because I think that's a really good question. We want to be good stewards of the tax payer dollars.
But I would like to see, I think it would be prudent to see how this policy might change under rotation rates.
I would have that in my mind.
So let me just ask one more question from the right under. We're on section one, parking passes and micros, paragraph two. How, how are we going to implement that in the actual usage? How are we going to know that about? Have you talked to Jerry, the county commissioner, about that program to put down?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're basically saying if they work eighteen or more workdays during sixty, sixty day work period? It may be suspended.
If they miss eighteen.
If they miss eighteen.
Right.
They miss eighteen days.
Then it could be suspended. Uh, I don't, I didn't want to make that mandatory because people have things happen. We understand that. Yeah, I think that's the actual implementation that is contingent on us paying the city the five hundred dollars and them being able to generate them.
Is it, is it more of a collection and will be unless they interface with the county judge to give these bribes?
That's, and that was the intent was we needed, says if you know you're going to be out for a while, you contact county judge's office and let them know so that you know, so that you're not confronting the prospect of having parking that's assigned. Right. Which seems reasonable enough.
Or, yeah, you could just monitor the parking lot.
We always, we still operate on golf cart.
Yeah.
It would be, we could do that and the ten for the lunch on the lawn.
Absolutely. It's a nice time.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed policy for parking on county property effective two twenty-six, twenty eighteen.
With the change of fifteen dollars.
Yeah, it's made in the version of the book, so.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Only favor, Rachel. Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number fourteen Burnman to consider for approval of proposed parking address over February two twenty-six, eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-six, eighteen. Richard Leighton is at A5 as we speak. This, we talked about this, so this is something that we're going to implement today is to keep coming.
We moved that we approved the Burnman for the incorporated parts of Potter County effective two twenty-six, eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-six, eighteen.
I have a motion in a second on the favor, Rachel. Five to zero. Thank you very much. Sheriff's racial profiling report, I'm seeing sheriffs one through two, two eighteen, twenty eighteen. Are we on racial profiling reports? Is he going to speak, you going to speak to that or just, just for our review? So recognized. Number sixteen application for license to operate sexually oriented business to consider for approval an application for a license to operate sexually oriented business at twelve hundred Spur, two twenty-eight, Potter County, Texas, by John Kennedy. I don't know why my name is on that, but. So is this, we have someone to speak with? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure, uh-huh.
Judge, my name is John Foley, H L E. I'm a attorney, I'm a attorney. And I'm here on behalf of Eastlake County, which is the owner of the property and of the, of the, of business at that location. And according, I guess, to the sexually oriented business order from this court, we have the, sorry, to present evidence in support of that application.
What was your last name again?
Foley, F A H.
Okay.
And I have a court that's.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Call, I don't know how the court wants to do this, but I just have a witness that I'd like to present. David Meza. And I'd ask you, the judge, or the county clerk to swear, Mr. Meza.
So this isn't an actual court proceeding? Can you tell us kind of the format that you're working towards, just so we're in line?
Right, yes. Thank you. I, I, when I was thinking, and again, this is obviously Sergeant T O's approval, is, I just wanted to ask Mr. Meza a few questions. I figured it would be, since it should be in the form of, you know, since the order speaks to evidence, I wanted to have him sworn. But, and then if the court wanted to ask him his questions after that, or if the commissioners wanted to ask him any questions.
Is it suitable to use, to add that on?
It is suitable to, Mr. Mesa, I don't know if he's representing him. We can take his statement with him. Swearing in here.
Okay, yeah. I, I'm not comfortable swearing in. They, I mean, this is not a court of law. So I may be having other things, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's needed to do that. So if Mr. Mesa or me, I'm either. And you're just going to ask him some questions?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, do you represent him?
I do not.
You do not, okay. Mr. Meza, you okay with this?
Good.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Meza. First off, can you spell your name?
David Meza, M E S T A. I'm a gentleman. Zonda erotica.
Okay, and Zonda erotica is the business.
On twelve hundred Spur.
Sorry.
On twelve hundred Spur.
And what, what sort of business is that?
Correct, that's a lingerie store, adult opportunity type business.
What do you mean by, well, let me ask you this. Have you looked at the sexually oriented business order that has been issued by this court?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the terms of that order?
Yes.
And was this business previously a sexually oriented business?
Yes.
Sorry, let me finish my question here. Sexually oriented business, such to find them.
Yes.
And is it currently a sexually oriented business?
No. No.
How, how long has that been?
Since last, that were, we had license, we did that were, I'm sorry.
And why was, why did, why was it changed?
They, what I was told was they failed to renew their license in time. And then they said that we were in violation of the thousand feet order. About the next one.
Okay. So you changed, because you didn't have a license, you changed the nature of the business, is that right?
So we took out what was considered adult and replaced it with lingerie and different type of.
Okay. And you still have, just so that, I'm not trying to mislead the court. You still have some, and when you say, sorry, back up a little bit. When you say took out what was considered adult.
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about the videos, DVDs?
And magazines.
The magazines.
And we took out thing, uh, the, the movie theater and private theater.
Okay. And then the, the, sorry, also the sex toys that would be items in the ordinance, or sorry, in the order, it says items that are designed for use in specified sexual activities. That I think would include sex toys. Did you take out some of those also?
No.
Okay. And so what, what percentage overall of the force base would you say is dedicated currently to, to adult, such as defined?
I think from our, about eight to ten percent.
Okay. So ten percent would be the highest side?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And magazines and DVDs.
Okay. And.
Since you're indicating that is the amount that you actually took out that was for adult.
For the amount that I took out would probably be about close to eighty-five percent.
So eighty-five percent of what was there.
What was there, took out, took out eighty-five.
Yes, sir. And it's now, and it now consists, it now makes up about ten percent.
Yes.
Ten, thirty, is it eight?
Eight to ten percent.
And then is there a residence anywhere? Well, you, you, again, you've read the order, you know, there are certain things that can't be within a thousand feet.
Yes, sir.
That includes a church, school, park, et cetera. Also with residents, correct?
Yes, sir.
Residents within a thousand feet.
Yes, sir.
Is there a home, I'm sorry, a building that claims to be?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what is that?
It's big ass barns.
Sorry.
It's, it's, I'm so sorry. It's big barn, there's, there's an empty building, like, it's that garage store house.
Can I ask you a question? We do have some comments from our legal counsel, so I would like to.
No, I'll wait until they're.
Okay, do you know about how much time we're looking at for this cross heart?
Couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's garage store, front door and a residence, just looking at.
Okay. And does anybody live there?
Not that I'm aware of.
What, you said not that you're aware of?
I work there sixteen hours a day and maybe once a week I'll see somebody outside pressing grass or just doing something outside, but not really anything that.
Does anybody ever spend the night there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did you used to be a skip tracer?
Yeah.
And have you done some, you know that somebody's claiming that that's a residence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And have you looked on, looked at the site, the publicdata.com to investigate?
Yes, sir.
And who owns that residence?
That's listed on. Norwood, Gander, Gander, Goy.
Is, is it actually listed to Suzanne Gulicki?
Yeah.
That's, that's true. Norwood, Ganders.
Uh, Goy.
Gulicki's. Gulicki's. What?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they claim this is a homestead, correct?
Yes, sir.
In order to be a homestead, it has to be a residence, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do Mr. and Mrs. Gulicki have another place that they consider as a homestead?
Yes, sir.
And what place is that?
Thirty-two eighteen South.
And that's listed in Mr. Gulicki's?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fogg, what, I just need to know if I'm.
Fogg, Foley.
Clearly, he's looking at your computer. So either you're representing him or you're in, just with each other on something. I think I'm going to stop here.
Well, I don't think the foods would be the right.
Well, maybe not.
If he's refreshing, it may be off my screen. I apologize. May I present this also? I'm, I'm through with, uh, Mr. Meza's.
I'll name him, this guy here. What dessert? In the court.
I'm standing in court, we can say, mark this as, you know, for reference. It's just a publicdata.com listing of Mr. Gulicki's residence that he claims is a homestead. And then in answer to your question, Ms.
Rakiya.
Rakiya, thank you. I, I, as you know, I have a tough name, which are now, so try to be sensitive. In reference to your question about how I wanted to handle this, I, I certainly, if the county attorney wanted to cross-examine Mr. Meza about it, or asking questions of his own about it, I would also ask the courtesy if, if there is evidence presented by anybody else that I'd be allowed to, to, you know, ask them questions. And I won't take all the time.
So can I ask a question administratively, Karen and Scott? So I remember last year when we did through this. And if I remember correctly, the application, this is what I, I had a mental note that this is the short form, if you will, of an application for renewal. That renewal lapsed, which made this entity then responsible for a full application, which also meant that all the original rules apply. There was no grandfather in the end, if you will. And so that's where the thousand feet came in. If there was a property around that thousand feet, I mean, the application was really null and void because there was no grandfather in, is that?
Well, it's grounds to deny.
Grounds to deny, okay. Which the court did deny off of those grounds. I'm just trying to recycle my mental notes to make sure it's been in here. Is that, is that correct?
On the side of my memory.
Okay, all right. So then for today, this is an application for a net new, so all the same, regardless applies. And so you're stating, you're trying to negate that someone has an actual residence there. So then that thousand feet rule, if you will, when you're, you're trying to negate that that would not potentially apply.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following the sequence of what's happened. Okay, I'm sorry.
Did anybody make a notice to the law keys to come in here?
Here, here. My folks, a question, has anything changed since we made the rule of determination that the full application needed to be made? And they did not apply with the movement of that?
That's, that's a question for Ted.
May I ask Mr. Meza a few questions? So you are the general manager of Zonda Erotica, which is now a lingerie store?
Yes, sir.
And not a sexually oriented business?
No, sir.
Is it operating successfully as a lingerie school?
No, sir.
Well, what's the problem?
We're lacking the adult business that we started.
So your intent going forward is to operate with a sexually oriented business?
Yes, sir.
So really, what, what you're doing right now has nothing to do with what we're asking today, right? You're asking for a license to complete a sexually oriented business?
Yes, sir.
You're going to go back to the way you were doing things?
Yes, sir.
And you were operating that as a sexually oriented business before. And you were operating that as a sexually oriented business before?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever been in the Gulicki's home?
No, sir.
Have you ever been on the property?
No, sir. I can see it on my business.
So your intent going forward is to go back to a sexually oriented business?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, there would be no reason to ask for a license, right?
Right.
Have you seen the application for licenses?
No, sir, I haven't.
Would you like to take a look at it? Do you recognize the signature on the second page?
Yes, sir.
Who's signatures that?
That is all number company, sir.
And who's that?
John Coyle.
John Canfield, John Abel?
John Canfield.
John Canfield, that's his signature.
Yes, sir.
You're sure?
I'm aware of this.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hey, would you like to show the pictures of that?
I'll do that through, Mr. Gulicki.
And Randy, can you just find the audience who needs to hear that?
I don't, I have to read it.
I'm just a tool.
Someone with family life step forward perhaps, Jim Gulicki was a lawyer, he was a brother, basically.
Good morning.
Do the photos, Mr. Gulicki, with the commissioners for his examine, are those accurate representations of the inside of your home?
Absolutely.
Is that the home located at twelve hundred Spur two twenty-eight?
Absolutely.
How long have you lived in that home?
We've actually been living there, I have a chronology that I worked up, uh, since, uh, August twentieth of ninety-four, is that right? And, uh, uh, we maintained a residence mainly because there were, there were two factors. The, uh, my wife's house had a foundation, uh, problem due to a water leak and we had to move out of that house in order to, uh, I think that we turned it over to the contractor for what, six months for them to replace that. We needed a place to live and we had already converted the, uh, office into a living, uh, space, uh, for weekend work while we were planting trees out on this property. But we fully maintained a complete residence in, uh, ninety-four and stayed there, uh, continuously uh, through the closure of the first triple X, uh, that was closed down by the Attorney General and that property was, uh, uh, the X signs were removed and any evidence of any sexual oriented business, business of the next door property were removed and put to auction. During that time period, we thought, uh, the neighborhood had been cleaned up and we, uh, went through a process of, of, uh, doing stages of remodeling of three hundred square feet within this eight hundred, uh, plus, uh, square foot building and, uh, had the results of, of what you've seen in the pictures. And during that time that the attorney, uh, US Attorney General owned the property, we filed a homestead, volume thirty-nine fourteen, page, uh, six hundred and nineteen, on September fourth of two thousand and seven. That was before...
Excuse me, let me start here up there. Is that your homestead today?
That, the homestead was publicly, uh, declared on September fourth of two thousand and seven.
And has it been your homestead ever since?
Oh, yes, yes.
And I'll ask you, you have your brother Jim Gulicki standing next to you, is that correct? And Jim, you're a lawyer in Austin, is this, you've been in the home?
Uh, ever since they've been in there, yes.
You can confirm to the court that is your brother and sister-in-law's residence?
It is, we've enjoyed very many Christmas celebrations in that home. We've come up here on many outing occasions, I spent the night there on many occasions and, uh, been their home for a family, well, as you said, since, really in the nineteen nineties.
Okay, I did, I had one more.
Ninety-two was when I walked through.
I have one more question. There was mention of a residence at thirty-two eighteen South Austin. Is there a person named Gulicki who lives at that residence?
Yeah, they're my mother, our mother.
Yeah, that is our mother, and in fact, I spent the night with her last night there. That's your mother's residence, correct?
And I might even throw in, the auction of the triple X property was executed on September eleventh of two thousand and seven. That was, uh, a good week after the filing of my homestead, which if, uh, Father Coyle had just done his homework, he would have seen that he actually bought a pig in the pothead, uh, had, and there was a resident established there.
Let me ask you...
Yes, sir.
The court's got some lawyers in, I'm happy to catch you off, so the problem, are you asking the court to deny the application of those before the court, this year?
I, what I am, what I'm asserting is we have a homestead and if the court would execute the laws of the state, which the county has adopted with, uh, the designation of sexually oriented business next to, in this particular case, a residence, that, uh, they need to, uh, execute, uh, no, uh, permit, just a law, laws that are on the books.
So, so the county attorney's question was, are you asking the commissioner's court to deny the application?
Yes.
They, will you follow the law? Yes, I am.
Just so you know.
The only question I have, we established that it's within, under, within a thousand feet.
We established that last month.
Correct, so what was the...
Yes, this is... Uh, you all voted on the twenty-third of January, five to one, to deny the, uh, permit at that particular time. I, it was seven hundred feet somewhere in there, I don't remember, it was seven hundred feet two. I found it by my math and measured it and said...
Full disclosure, I have, I did that too, but I asserted those, uh, what we did.
Well, I can, I can literally go back to that. When the application a year ago was denied, um, we entered into an exchange with Mr. Kenneth Coyle and his attorney in Utah and it was represented to us that the, uh, business was going to convert from a sexually oriented business to a lingerie school. And we were in agreement that if twenty-five percent or less of the material, this adult material, that that would not constitute a sexually oriented business within our regulations and we wouldn't have a problem with it and they wouldn't need a license. I have every reason to believe that that was all nonsense and that we now have two grounds for denial. One is there is a residence within a thousand feet and the other is they've been operating a sexually oriented business without license. Those are both grounds for denial under our regulations. With what we have at force right now, if counsel may wish to present more, if he does, that's fine, but...
I'm ready to make a motion, we are ready to motion.
I'm ready also, I just want to put one thing...
I thought you said you would give me a chance to ask a couple of questions, the same as...
And that, that's not the purpose, considers that, but I want to make sure that, uh, that we're toward emphasizing that in your questioning, Mr. Mesz, he indicated that they is intent, or intent, through management to go back to a fully, uh, uh, sexually oriented business as was the effect prior to...
Absolutely, just like, why is it applying for license?
I think they were...
Mr. Ram, I'm ready to make a motion, but if you would like to allow him time, this is not a court proceeding, so we're not required to do that.
I understand, but you did tell me you would, personally. Just, just for, but that, we're for the time on this, but then, again, uh, we're not going to, uh, deliberate this, uh, at this point. So, yes, if you have, you have a few questions that you want to pose, uh, but let's understand that, uh, you want to strike.
Sure, and sir, I'm sorry, and I was mispronouncing your name, I apologize for that. Uh, what, what, what is your full name?
Norwood.
Van, last name Gulicki, okay, so you do own the property here?
Ever since ninety-two.
I'm sorry, ever since?
No, no, thirty-two eighteen South Austin, I'm sorry, Suzanne Gulicki, the, wow, the thirty-two eighteen Austin.
This question, you own the property, it's twenty-three eighteen.
Oh, that's mine, he's in twenty-three. No, I didn't say, that's my mother's property, she owns it outright.
She owns it outright?
Yes.
Okay, but you're listed in the county records as the owner?
I own thirty-two eighteen South Austin.
You're not listed as the owner there?
Yes, if you do your research, you can find that out yourself.
Well, I, I, I did and I saw, I mean, the, the, you are listed.
Mr. Gulicki, what is your, what is your mother's first name?
My mother's name is Gaynor.
And that's the property, you just showed me, sir, Gaynor Gulicki owns that property. Okay, we're done with that.
I would also like to say that, that after that allegation was made back in January, the tax, it says, the tax appraisal office sent a letter to Mr. Coyle informing him that that information is incorrect. They've known that for six, eight weeks.
I have one more question for Mr. Mesz. You were up here, sir, you said something to the fact that you have lingerie and other items.
Lingerie, t-shirts, uh, lotions, things like that. I am not operating an adult drugstore at the moment, I'm operating a lingerie store.
And, and I, just to remind you, Judge, he did testify, there is, there is approximately ten, eight to ten percent of what they, what is considered adult items in, in the ordinance, or sorry, in the force order.
Adult, uh, I'd like to make a motion, Judge, if you're ready. Scott, Ted, are we good to proceed with the motion?
I make a motion that we deny the application for the license to operate a sexually oriented business at twelve hundred Spur two twenty-eight Potter County, Texas, from the applicant John Kenneth Coyle on grounds that a residence is located within a thousand feet.
Second.
I have a motion in second on favor, Richard.
Thank you, thank you for your time, thank you.
Page number seventeen, portable bid awards, you consider next, probably four, 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 number one-one-five-nine, that's one-eight. Road materials, lowest responsive vendor list, coming with low recommendations.
Yes, this is our name on this portable bid that we do every year and we have your calculations. I'm just asking, Sebastian, would you go for it, can you approve it? And the project starts, uh, March first.
Sebastian, you good with it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Now, get ahead, motion that you... Make a motion that we approve portable bids one-one-five-five dash one-eight. Road materials, lowest responsive vendor list as presented to the court.
Sebastian, you, uh, utilized the secondary award when the, the primary award winner was not available.
Yes, sir. Just not have that. Yes, sir, as far as asphalt or the, the gravel, there's several different...
Coligee and pre-mix and stuff, secondary award, it's not, like, certain.
And usually the, the primary is available, except for on the asphalt, that's where we have issues because the plants will go down the way asphalt. But on the asphalt, we'll go to the first one, if they're not available, we'll go to the second one and use it there. But that's why I figured out this information.
I have a motion, is there a call in favor, Richard?
I didn't have a second.
Yeah, I'm glad we did. All in favor, Richard?
employment Adams, you consider next, probably seven, employment Adams, facility maintenance, the resignation of Joe Daniel Redoff as mechanic technician one, that's the mark four twenty-eight.
We approve him. Employment Adams, thanks for that.
I have a motion in second on favor, Richard. Uh, number nineteen, part of the county projects, Mike?
Uh, Commissioner Gede, you have a question, if I ask me about the baseball stadium. Uh, Commissioner Nicholas this morning, he's been working with Sandy Sinner, probably over ninety percent of the, of the stadium, throwing away all the extra items out there. Nicholas, when we make all the way to the, uh, Sandy Sinner, we contacted y'all, they already had one game this year in order to buy a charge of, of companies.
And here's Miss Benny Blues.
Yes, yes.
She's been out since, huh, been recently?
One thing that they probably are not going to have us do, that we've always done in the past, we've always sprayed water on that there in early spring, they're going to continue to use the purple, uh, toilets that they have out there instead of spraying that water on the stadium. The law enforcement center project, we have the dedication on March the seventh. Just kind of make aware of what you're going to see when you go out there. Uh, the vehicle maintenance project is complete, we have items sorted in as far as furniture. The law enforcement center, we went through last week, we built it in the side of, three days of nothing but punch list on the building, behind the architects, the sheriff, the chief and their staff assisted us through that. Uh, they will be, the contractor will be correcting that work between now and dedication. The property, when you drive in, you're going to see that a lot of it is not done. That has to do with the side works, the additional side work that they will approve, so just, uh, understand that. Regarding the, uh, project, uh, right now, uh, we're probably a little under half a million dollars left in the contingency. I still have some items that I'm working on out there regarding purchasing and a couple more additional scopes of work that I'll be working with. Right now, after today you approved the, uh, application for Western Builders, they have filled out one hundred percent of their general conditions under pay request. The only thing that they have left out there right now is any proposal, request or change order they've built in their general conditions in order to manage their project. The additional side works, I mentioned before, the last one that we've approved, it starts in mid-June, we'll go through probably around two by the sixth in order to complete that, is redoing one of the rooms out there. And that is it.
And you might just remind everybody when the ribbon cutting is going to be?
Tenth, seven, the seventh at ten AM, correct?
Everyone's invited, so, okay, thanks, Mike, thank you.
Number twenty, the jail report, we have five hundred and fifty-three people in the jail, seventy-five of those are female, uh, none of them children, and eighty-three percent felon, and seventeen percent is criminal.
Yes, we do have one, it was with the Potter County Sheriff's Transport Officers. There was a minor traffic accident there that we're going to file, so, Sheriff, did you want to say anything on that? Were we at all, and then one here, who were at all, and then is anyone injured? As far as, no injuries?
I don't think so. Somebody, somebody came, uh, went to the car, right?
Forty-seven, it said here, it was in...
Austin, somewhere.
In Austin?
We've been out, we had several people that came out and said that it's, or it happened as a blind, it's a blind exit out of a parking lot.
So it was one of our vehicles down in Austin? Our vehicle, as far as I know, was no damage, it's the other vehicle that Mark were carrying.
Yes, ma'am, whatever, transport and prison vehicle.
Right, yeah, I'm just...
It's back.
Headed back.
Or no, it's already back.
Okay, thank you, thanks, people. Uh, it's like your session, we'll have anything on that today, Jim, the audience for next time.
Received, uh, call, calls and emails concerning this, uh, public defender, you know, and our concern is that citizens aren't having any say. And so I don't know where this, uh, deal is at, so, but I think if, uh, we got to know, because they're asking, when are the county commissioners going to have some say in this?
My only answer is going to be, I don't hear anything from the committee, so...
And they're not ready to talk yet, I mean, I mean, as far as...
Well, what, what we have proposed, I think you leave the evidence, is that, uh, we bring a, uh, a report, and a presentation to this court, and we have a joint, uh, with the father of Amber and Armstrong County Commissioner's Court, to, like, where we are in respect to, uh, this committee and the deal right now.
That is something you know, it'll be okay to do.
We're going to ask whether or not to include those other counties, so I don't, I don't... When does that happen?
Well, we do have a town, we have a man, that, uh, because of the, uh, courts, which are, causing over, that, uh, it's, uh, we, uh, we're leaving a statement, that's, we both ran with Armstrong County, and it's just a discussion, uh, and, and that's what the select committee is, uh, respectful to. So it's going to the public, uh, in return, uh, you know, having input, this, uh, the select committee was chosen very, uh, seriously to ensure that all, with her diversity, and all entities, including the public, were represented. And, uh, the town got open to, uh, the young public, and did not deny it, but, uh, we didn't, we didn't do, uh, a circle like that, as we're, uh, having a lot of input, and considering, uh, the time angle of view. But we already can bring that to the court, and it was, uh, involving us, uh, very good time after. And, uh, visiting with, uh, President Armstrong.
We're not talking Friday at 5:00, so...
Well, and it certainly would, uh, help the court, the, the resources, uh, that have all of the...
I would, uh, certainly like to see, uh, public involved, uh, or if they want to be involved, and we need to have, uh, I think we need to have a meeting that involves the public and give an explanation of what's happening with this particular program, you know, before any decision is made. I know that there's been a letter sent, a letter of intent, is that correct?
A letter of intent, continued by, with the, uh, own discussion, and going to much information. He said, that's all, that he was no obligation whatsoever, just to continue the discussion. But that is the intent of bringing that to all of the courts at the time, and, uh, certain the public, certain people will be invited on this.
Yes, that is an obligation for some kind of a grant.
No. This is not on the agenda, so we really can't...
Well, I know, but... Something we're going to put out. I'm getting asked these questions, and I can't, sir.
No.
And it sounds to me like, uh, somebody knows something that, like, the rest of us know a little bit.
So maybe we can just put an agenda next court to just give an update, so that we are in full purview to just give an update. It doesn't have to be action, just to hear an update.
Let's do that, okay. In the meantime, we have, uh, Alan Bristol here from TAC. If you would like to just say a few words.
Good morning.
Mr. Judge.
You got to say something today that none of us...
I don't think so.
I brought back prosecutorial memories, I, I, several SOB, in the very end.
Ever since the war.
I want to applaud y'all, uh, you're one of our strongest counties, uh, as far as side revenue caps. Of course, you have Kell Seliger, who's one of our heroes, should be a county hero. Uh, should be a local control hero, uh, and that's what it's all about. Leon mentioned, um, it's school finance, that's driving the whole thing. The state used to pay about 65%, they're paying about 40% now. And with the appraisal districts, I, I came back to TAC from the legal tax collection, and that's what they're doing. They're, they're forcing appraisal districts to stay within 1% to, 1% or 2% uh, margin on property values. And if they don't, they get in trouble, or the state can actually come in and take over that appraisal district. So, that, there needs to be some appraisal reform, uh, but it's, it's, it's not the appraisal district's fault, they're being mandated to stay within a certain amount, and that's, the legislature is using the increase of property values to fund their 40%, pushing more unfunded mandates down on us. So, I encourage y'all to attend the Panhandle Judges and Commissioners that will be here at the Extension, Extension Office Thursday. Uh, I gave each of you a sample of, uh, unfunded mandate, push card, postcard, for lack of a better term, that our legislative department came up with. Uh, one of them is to send to Lieutenant Patrick, and the other one is to send to the governor, just to let them know, for the first time in, in history, revenue caps have been on the table on and off for 30 years. So, this current group of what I call radical Republicans is really pushing hard for that. They're forgetting their moderate base, they're forgetting the rest of us normal folks. So, uh, we need to let them know, the House passed that unfunded mandate, but, uh, bill last session immediately got killed when it went over to the Senate, but it's the first time anything like that has ever passed. There are 20 states in the United States that have unfunded mandate bills. It's part of their state constitution, so it can be changed. So, uh, you guys know, you touched on a lot of them, indigent healthcare, indigent, indigent defense. Uh, you're paying for a lot of things that the state is making you pay for. They gripe about Washington pushing stuff down on them, and they're doing the same thing to cities and counties. The difference is, counties have to cover the property tax, they don't live where you make revenue. Cities have some living room, they have other things, they can make money off of water, sewer, whatever. So, uh, I, I applaud y'all for staying involved, I challenge you to please stay engaged, uh, and please encourage people to vote for Mr. Seliger. He stood up, so, uh, I wish I listened here, I could vote for him, we've already voted for him. So, uh, please vote, and, uh, I'll be around if anybody wants to talk. Uh, I plan on staying here all day, I'm going to go visit some surrounding counties, and then I'll be at the Panhandle Judge and Commissioners Conference on Thursday. But there should be some more of those, uh, I think Paul or Rick Thompson will be here Thursday, and they're going to have a bunch of those. I will forward to judge an email where you can order some free chart. A lot of people, the general public doesn't know what an unfunded mandate is. They just know that that's not fixed, or there's problems with the sheriff's department, or whatever. So, it's, it's part of our job. In county government, we do not beat our chest, and we don't tell our story very well at all, but you need to. I guarantee you, in Potter County, you're probably only 16 to 70% of somebody's tax bill. 70, 70% of it's going to be school district. And a little bit for people that live in Emerald, there's probably a few companies, district. Very small, that, but we need to let people know how much you do for how, what you do it for. And I, I, I appreciate y'all, applaud y'all, and please continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
I have one thing.
Of course.
I was in College Station last week for the, uh, County Commissioners Court hearing. We had a speaker from the, uh, he was a state representative from Brazos County area. And, uh, he talked about the House's vote on the, uh, unfunded mandates, and it passed like 100.7 to 19. The 19 that voted against it are totally funded and supported during the year by the power of Texas. That's right. If you're not afraid of the power of Texas, you need to check and move on. And, um, it got to the Senate, and Patrick killed it right on his desk, never got it out of his desk. Anyway, we, well, and we are sort of, revenue caps, Leon, uh, y'all may know that this, the, uh, the House would compromise, they were going to float out a 6% compromise, and Dan Patrick said, no, it's all or nothing, and he walked away. So, yep, it's coming back, and I, I applaud y'all for, for fighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you then, Commissioner.
Okay.